The three candidates running for Rockwall County Commissioner, Place Three, are here in the bunker today for some straight talk in hopes of winning the vote of Rockwall County conservatives. I'm Bunker Bob Steinhegen and welcome to the bunker for this special edition of The Bunker Bob Show. Yes, welcome to this special edition of The Bunker Bob Show and I know that you'll be glad you took the time to hear what the candidates running for Rockwall County Commissioner and Precinct Three have to say. I want to give each candidate the opportunity to put their best foot forward, which is why, as I have always done, the candidates received a copy of the questions before they had to decide to participate. Now, through the magic of video, we create the illusion that all three candidates are in studio at the same time. However, each candidate sat down with me for a one-on-one interview, which is edited together to create the illusion that they're here at the same time. This is why I'll ask follow-up questions of one candidate, but not the other, and why candidates don't respond to one another's answers. In fact, the first time any of the candidates have heard the answers from their opponent will be after this show has been broadcast. Now, I never place time limits on candidates' answers because I want to give each candidate the opportunity to speak to each issue in depth, which is what you will see in this, the longest forum to date. But I've also posted a timeline in the description so that you can jump to the questions that most interest you. Now, since most candidates are not used to being on camera, as they're not professional politicians, before we begin, I let every candidate know that they can re-answer or restate anything they say because the purpose of today's show is to allow them to be the best that they can be. So with that, let me introduce the candidates for today's show and I will start with Johnny Myers. Johnny is a sixth-generation Rockwall County resident who has spent his life serving our community. Johnny's Rockwall roots run deep. His father, John Dan Myers, was a Rockwall County Commissioner in the late 1970s until his passing. Now Johnny's daughters have continued the tradition and are proud seventh-generation Rockwallians. Now, when his father passed away at 15, Johnny was thrust into adulthood, living independently and taking over his father's construction business while continuing his education. It was then Johnny learned the importance of personal responsibility and accountability. Johnny would eventually serve in various high-level leadership roles as a business leader and franchise owner for a Fortune 500 company. This position enhanced his natural ability for strategic planning, budgeting, product development, and creative problem solving. An entrepreneur, Johnny currently owns his own company, JRM Services, that fights big insurance companies on behalf of homeowners and plans to bring this same fight to the county commission and hold county leaders accountable for the hard-working Rockwall taxpayers. Johnny met his wife Karen on a blind date and together they have been married for more than 42 years. They have proudly called Rockwall home for them and their children, Chelsea and Brianna, and now have two grandchildren, seven-year-old girl and a one-year-old boy. I bet that's fun, isn't it?
Oh, it's amazing, Bob.
Does it really change your life?
Oh, yes, it does. I mean, when you see him and you, when they come over and they, you know, he spent the night, the other night again, it's just like, you know, if you could, and I don't take me wrong on this, but if you could just skip the kids and go to the grandkids.
I hear that.
It's just such an amazing feeling that, you know, to have them, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I hear that all the time.
I can't explain the feeling, you know? I guess when you become a grandparent, then you know.
That's what I'm-
It's one of them invisible-type feelings.
I'm not there yet, but I, that's what everyone tells me.
Yes.
All right. Johnny and Karen are members of East Ridge Church of Christ in Rockwall and are both active members in the community, including the Rockwall Women's League, local Republican Committees, and other charitable organizations. Johnny, great to have you here today.
Thank you, Bob. Glad to be here.
Yes, sir. And now I'd like to introduce Rich Kraus, who has been a consistent, proven conservative Republican community leader and 28-year resident of Rockwall County. Rich has served the Rockwall County community for over 20 years. He currently serves several roles, including Heath City Council since 2009, and he's actually, you've actually been on the show. This isn't your first rodeo with me.
This is my second time on the show.
Yeah, so, and that worked out pretty well for you last time, right?
I think it did.
And so, he also serves on the Heath Park Board since 2016, Rockwall County Republican Party Precinct 2C 3E Chair since 2014. That means that he's on the, what we call the Executive Committee, a very important role, and Rockwall County Library Advisory Board since 2021. Kraus has no direct or indirect conflict of interest, personal or financial gain from any developers or property owners that are doing development in Rockwall County. Kraus has extensive experience in program management, some contracts, and supplier management with L3 formerly E Systems, giving a unique perspective on various stakeholders and processes related to operations, both in planning and execution. Rich has an AAS Business Management BS in Human Relations and Business Management and an MBA in Strategic Leadership. Plus, he has over 200 hours of employer training and 60 hours of Texas Municipal League training. He was one of only 62 in all Texas municipal government employees and volunteers to graduate from the Texas Municipal League Leadership Academy in 2014. Kraus also believes good business practice is also essential in operating our county. These insights have already been utilized to save Heath taxpayers money by insisting on greater competition for subcontractors on service and construction with more detailed evaluation and negotiation. As a 28-year resident and community leader, Kraus has seen the good, the bad, and the ugly in our county, I'm sure of that. He has a significant record of volunteer involvement in our community, having served in many leadership roles and organizations, including Heath City Council, Mayor Pro Tem, Park Board, Board of Adjustment, Comprehensive Plan Committees, and Chairman of the 2010 Census Committee. Kraus is also very engaged with Rockwall County Chamber of Commerce, Children's Advocacy Center, Meals on Wheels, and all GOP clubs. Kraus was married to Heather for 34 years before she sadly and suddenly passed away in 2019. He has two wonderful daughters and six grandchildren who grew up in Rockwall County. Kraus's daughter, Ashley, her husband, and their two children reside in Heath, as did Kraus's father before passing away in 2019. Well, Rich, it is great to have you on the show again.
Thank you, Bob.
And so I'd like to introduce you to Lauren Lictie. Now Lauren grew up in a family farm where milking cows and working in the fields were regular chores. Is that, does that really happen? I mean, you hear that all the time.
It really happened. Let me tell you, ours was a very traditional family farm. I mean, it's much different than what you see today, I think. We had chickens, we had milk cows, we had cattle we would raise to sell for, you know, in the market. We had about 520 acres of tillable farmland that we would go grow crops on. So it was kind of a traditional family farm. It's just, it's kind of different now.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Well, he learned a lot during those early years, building a great work ethic balanced by his parents' influence toward faith, compassion, and benevolence. After completing high school, Lauren attended Oral Roberts University, ORU, graduating with a Bachelor of Arch degrees with double majors in History and Business Administration. Lauren went, then went on to study at the University of Notre Dame, where he graduated in 1981 with both a Juris Doctor degree and a Master of Business Administration degree. Immediately after law school, Lauren and his wife, Mary, relocated to Texas and moved to the city of Heath in 1986. Well, since moving into Rockwall County, Lauren has spent his adult life serving our community. Lauren joined the Heath Park Board as a charter member in 1996 and served there until 2004, leading as Chairman of the Park Board for the last four years. During that time, he also served on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, which developed the city's 1996 and 2001 comprehensive plans. After leaving the Heath Park Board, Lauren served eight years on Heath's City Council. He was elected Mayor of Heath in 2012 and continued serving in that capacity until 2016. Lauren has always had an entrepreneurial spirit. After high school, Lauren and his brother Paul started a small bicycle shop, which paid his way through college. In 1989, he and his law partner formed a private business-oriented law firm, which represents clients on a national basis and continues to operate today under the name Lictie McGinnis Berryman and Bowen LLP. Lauren is a lifelong conservative Republican who works diligently to allow everyone's voice to be heard and considered. He is best at listening to all points of view and then helping to reach decisions on the best outcome for all. As he has always done, Lauren will advocate for Rockwall County citizens and what they want the county to be. Lauren and Mary Lictie have been married for 45 years. They have four children and seven grandchildren, and Lauren has been an elder at Lake Shore Church for nearly 20 years, where he has taught classes, led mission trips, and has helped to lead that church through multiple stages of successful growth. Lauren has also served on multiple boards and service organizations within our community, including serving as Chairman of the Board of Directors of Rockwall County Helping Hands, President of the Rockwall County Open Space Alliance, Chairman of Rockwall County Historical Commission, President of the Rockwall Rotary Club, and as a member of the Boards of Directors of the Rockwall County Central Appraisal District, the Rockwall Chamber of Commerce, Heritage Christian Academy, and other organizations. In his spare time, spare time, in his, it doesn't look like you have spare time, but okay. In his spare time, Lauren enjoys spending time with his family, hunting, riding motorcycles, collecting books and presidential signatures, and acting in local community theater productions. Lauren, it's great to have you here today.
Thanks, Bob, and thanks for inviting me and giving me the opportunity to come share.
You bet. You bet. All right, the first question is an easy one. Why are you running? Lauren?
It's an easy question, an easy answer.
Okay.
I'm running because this is my home. I've lived here since 1986. Mary and I raised our children here. We came here to join the church. We live in a community. We have friends throughout this county. I want to make Rockwall County better when I leave it than when I came, and I've served all my life to do just that in multiple capacities. So I am, I am running for this position because I want to make Rockwall County a better place. Now, what actually tipped me and made the decision to do this is because we are facing really a lot of issues in our county right now, and specifically in Precinct Three, related to high-density development. When we go door-to-door, you hear constantly that theme of developments and high-density developments specifically is a big issue. When I got involved in Heath in 1996 on the Park Board and the First Comprehensive Plan Committee, Heath had begun to experience some growing pains. There were some developments in Heath that had been built out that frankly wouldn't be accepted today, and we decided we wanted to take control of where we were going as a community. The Comprehensive Plan Committee set and designated a general density goal of one lot per acre within our city limits, and that has served us very well. In addition to that, I, on the Park Board and again in City Council, we got grants from Texas Parks and Wildlife. We built the new, the Town Center Park, did the first park there. We redid Terry Park, which is a beautiful park right on the lake there in Heath. So those open space opportunities were really important to me there. As mayor, I set as a priority improving our infrastructure because frankly it had lagged, and so we set, created a capital improvement plan to do that and to make sure that our roads, our water, our sewer were in good condition and functioning and providing a good service to our citizens. Seeing those same problems that were facing us back in 96, when I got involved in Heath, now manifesting themselves in the county and especially the unincorporated areas of the county, is really the thing that pushed me over to the point of saying, I'm going to do this, I'm going to run for office, I'm going to make this county the best place it can be and do whatever I can to impact it positively, just like I did when I was at Heath, and by the way, like I'm doing right now in the county where I work on the Open Space Alliance and in other capacities.
Thank you, Lauren. Johnny, how about you?
Well, Bob, I'm not a career politician, and again, I am sixth-generation Rockwall County. I spent most of my life serving the community in some various means. Whether it was in, with my business or with various means and of the church and serving with the church and attending church, I like to talk to the constituents, I like to talk to the voters, law enforcement, you know, people that are in charge of different various of, of the county and the cities. By the way, you stay informed, you stay, you see what their concerns are. So that's one of the reasons, and we need to have a conservative Republican who will always do what they say they're gonna do and hold, be accountable for that. And you can ask around, I'm a man of my word. If I can tell you I'm going to do something, I'm going to do everything I can to do it. If I tell you I can't do it, then we're going to try to look for a way to do it, but if I can't, I'm going to tell you. I'm not going to beat around the bush, I'm just going to tell you this is what we can and can't do.
All three of you are from Heath?
Correct.
And so, you know, and Lauren was a former mayor, you've got a, you know, you've got Rick, who's councilman. You've not done any, anything like that. Why do you say, hey, county commissioners, where I want to start?
Well, I think the county commissioner with, needs to be ran like a business.
Okay.
Like, yeah, I'm not a politician.
Right.
You know, but run the county commissioners court as a business, because if you look to the structure of it, you look up there and you have the commissioners with the county judge, then you have everybody else under you, that they basically report to you just like you would as a manager or in a corporation. And you're there to oversee and, you know, look to see if they have a problem, they bring it to you, or you have constituents, then you can, you know, relay that back to the, let's just say, if you had a problem at the tax office, you know, there, that way you can relay it back to Kim Sweet. And I'm talking about tax assessor, and I'm just using Kim as an example.
Yeah, sure, yeah, absolutely.
But, no, I think the county needs to be run just like a business and not run it as some people have in the past, as it's just a job, you know? It's not going to be a job to me. It's going to be something very dear to my passion that I want to do with the longevity that my family has in this community. There's nothing that I think I could do more than serve as county commissioner.
Now, you own your own business, and so if you were elected, would you, how much of the time would you spend on your own business and on county commissioner?
County commissioner is getting to be 100% full-time job, and I would dedicate my time to 100% of county commissioner, because that's what the constituents of Precinct Three are electing me for, and that's what I would do.
So county commissioner is going to be your job?
Correct.
Very good, awesome. Rich?
Why am I running?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that is a great question.
Why would anyone want this job? That's what I want to know.
Well, I've been told that many times with many other positions that I volunteered for, why would anybody want to do that? In fact, Heather used to call me the serial volunteer. There's something wrong with you.
Good for our community, though, isn't it?
It is, and it has been great for our community, and I would state this, that when Heather did pass tragically, it was this community and it was community service that really pulled me through. There was an amazing amount of support from, from our community. And, you know, when, when this opportunity came up, and I've been going to county commissioner court meetings for years, just like I did city council meeting for years, and, you know, as I was, you know, on my porch, you know, praying about it, I admit, there may be some whiskey and cigars involved.
I would imagine all of you have had to do that.
This, this is basically once, at least in my lifetime opportunity, because, you know, I'm 63 now, and the fact that this opportunity came up now, after getting a very nice retirement package from L3, you know, Harris with three pensions and, you know, really good, really nice package, so I have the time now to contribute even more to my community. And, and in this case, I can actually help more people than I could before within our community. And, and I do want to emphasize, I've been involved in throughout Rockwall, you know, the whole time I'm here. I'm just not the Heath guy. I mean, I've done a lot in Heath, but, you know, Leadership Rockwall 2015, that's a long time ago, you know, that I've been engaged. And, you know, I just thought this would be a great opportunity for me to step in at this critical time, because it is kind of like Heath in that our, our unincorporated areas are really at risk right now, you know, with these muds and overdevelopment, as I'm sure we'll talk about.
Yeah.
And, and it really can't wait. It's really got to be addressed as soon as possible in order to get it, turn the right direction. It's a four-year term, which is good, because it's going to take a while to do some of these things. These are not easy tasks to do.
No, they're not.
And, and I can imagine, you know, two terms, I'll be, what, 72 years old at that point, you know, and believe me, I'm a big believer in term limits.
Ready to run for Congress, then?
I am not really interested in doing anything beyond this, let me state that. This is all the fun that I'm really going to go for, and after this, I'm truly going to retire.
All right, well, very good. Glad to have you here. All right, the next question is, do you have a faith, and if so, what is it, and how will it guide you when elected? Rich, how about you?
Well, you know, I say funny, it's probably not funny. I've, I'm a pretty well-vetted, challenged Christian, you know? I've had a, unfortunately, several tragic losses.
Yeah, yeah.
I haven't had any grandparents since I was eight years old, and, you know, lost my mom and then lost my wife. This is not the order that you're expecting. Then lost my father, and then last year, lost my brother. Yeah, so I know a lot about grief and loss, but what I do know in my strong faith is that we will all be together again, and, and there is a purpose for me to be here, and that I need to make the best of my life and to lead by example in that, you know, and use my loss to have, you know, empathy for others and lead with ethics, you know, lead with integrity and, and show what Christian faith is about. And in that will, will help me a lot when I'm elected, because all these decisions have to be done, in my opinion, to, to the citizens' benefit. And, and you're going to have a lot of people pushing and pulling you around as to what they think their, their best benefit is, but you have to hold on to your integrity and your faith and say, you know, please, Lord, tell me what's the best answer for the masses.
Thank you. Lauren?
I'm a Christian. I accepted Christ and committed my life to Him when I was eight years old and have tried to live in accordance with His principles ever since then. Locally, we attend Lake Shore Church. We've done so since 1996. I'm an elder there. We lead mission trips. We've taken tour groups to Israel. I've taught classes. I've preached, very involved in the church, love it, and very happy with that. How will it guide me as a county commissioner is a huge question. I, right now, my Christian faith guides me every day. I have devotions, try to do it every day. Ask the Lord for wisdom and direction in my daily life and in decisions I make every day. That won't change when I'm county commissioner. I'll have that same dedication to trying to live and fulfill my purpose as county commissioner in accordance with Christian principles and biblical mandates. And this is perfectly consistent with our history as a nation. And I've got a quote here that I wanted to bring from one of my favorite presidents, Teddy Roosevelt.
Oh, yeah.
And this is a leaflet that was published in 1996, or 1906, I'm sorry, by the American Bible Society, and it's the text of a speech he gave to this Bible Society when he was Vice President in 1901. And there's a quote here I want to read, so just give me a second. This is a very old and very fragile document.
That's amazing.
He said, "Every thinking man, when he thinks, realizes what a large number of people tend to forget, that the teachings of the Bible are so interwoven and entwined with our whole civic and social life, that it would be literally, I do not mean figuratively, I mean literally, impossible for us to figure to ourselves what that life would be if these teachings were removed. We would lose almost all the standards by which we now judge both public and private morals."
I love that.
So what President Roosevelt was saying was, we can't imagine our life and our society without the Bible as our foundation. Well, fast forward from the time he gave that speech, 60 years to the early 1960s, when we had two Supreme Court decisions which removed prayer and removed the Bible from our schools. And in my opinion, from that point forward, we've seen a decline in the morality of our nation, a decline in the respect for law and order, an increase in crime, and many other moral problems and failings, I think largely because we took the Bible out of our schools, and it's not taught. You can't have the Ten Commandments on the schoolhouse like I saw when I went to school. I remember, I think it was third grade, Mrs. Lindgren, she came into class one day and she said, "We're not going to pray this morning," she said, "because there was, we're not able to do that anymore." And that was, I'm assuming, I know it was Mrs. Lindgren that said it, and she was my third-grade teacher, so I'm assuming that was right after one of those Supreme Court decisions. But the impact that has, and our nation was founded on Christian principles, and when you rip out that foundation, which was done by those decisions, you're going to see a decline in our morality, and you're going to see a, a nation that's headed in the wrong direction. And when you look around today, I think that's what you're seeing, and I think it's the direct result of all that. So faith is very important. It's, it's a part of my life today. It'll be part of my life when I'm elected county commissioner. It will always be a part of my life.
Thank you. Johnny?
Yes, Bob. I am a Christian, been members of the East Ridge Church of Christ at Rockwall for a number of years. Been there before we were actually members of the original Rockwall Church of Christ. Then it went to, we split, went to Lakeside, and then now both churches have come back together in form of the one church as East Ridge.
Okay.
I very much so am a believer in the Lord and Jesus Christ as our Savior, that He died for the, for our sins, and I have prayed about this as far as running for commissioner, and I will continue to pray on the guidance and even as commissioner, anything that was, that would be a very hard decision for me, and even normal everyday, I like to pray. Sometimes it's maybe just a prayer to tell the Lord, thank you, it was a good day.
Very good. Well, in 2022, 84% of Rockwall County voters cast ballots in the Republican primary. Not surprisingly, Rockwall County Republican candidates averaged 72% of the vote in the general election. Now, to put this in perspective, Republicans running in statewide races like governor, attorney general, and land commissioners, for example, held on to their seats with an average of 54% of the vote, which demonstrates why Rockwall County is one of the reddest counties in Texas. This demonstrates that to get elected in Rockwall County, one must run as a Republican, a fact that incentivizes Democrats to run as Rhinos, Republicans in name only. Now, considering this, what is your definition of a Republican, and how should an elected Republican be different from Democrats, independents, and other third-party commissioners? Johnny?
Well, I'm just going to answer it like this, Bob. To me, a Republican, you've got God first, you've got family second, and you got, you've got the country third. If every Republican would do these values, then I think we would see a big difference in our party. I don't think we'd have some of the split that we have. And as far as a Rhino, they're going to do what they gotta do. They're going to tell you what you want to hear, they're going to do exactly, they're going to tell you one thing and do just the opposite, but when you finally figure that out, it's usually too late.
That's right.
But I can assure you right now that these are the values that I will hold, and I, and I, there are a lot of other Republicans here in Rockwall County that have my same values, and I've demonstrated that, and that's why I'm running on a Republican, because I'll 100% tell anybody that I am a Republican, running for county commissioner in Rockwall County.
Very good. Rich? Rich, sorry.
Sure, yeah. I think that is a good question, and fortunately for me, it's, it's very clear that I've been a Republican all my life. It's not something that I've changed, you know, had different perspectives and, you know, in fact, proud to say, didn't know it would be at the time, but yeah, my very first election for president, my vote was for Ronald Reagan.
Wow, that's awesome.
And I waited through this incredibly long line through a school in Garland, you know, to do that.
Wow.
So obviously, I'm a proponent for early voting, by the way.
Okay, okay.
That results in all of that. But, and again, being a, you know, GOP precinct chair nine years, so I, you know, contributed, contributed greatly, whether it was, you know, budgets and procedures and bylaws, you know, to GOP. I've been there, whether I'm in an election or not, you know, a lot of people show up when they're, when they're campaigning, then they fade away.
Right.
After the election.
Right.
I've been there throughout. I've been there, you know, pounding signs and handing out constitutional out constitutional amendment, you know, forms at the library.
I've seen you out there.
And and doing my work for the, you know, for the Republican Party. And I'm glad that we're in Republican County. I do believe in the conservative Republican, you know, values and the Constitution and personal freedoms and government giving the most service with the least taxes and the least government.
Hmm.
And that's how I feel it is with with conservatives. And and I think you should act that way within all aspects of your life.
Very good. Thank you. Lauren?
I love this question. And to answer it properly, I take a look at our history as a party.
Okay.
Okay. And we've got a great history as a party.
As a state party or national?
National.
National party, good.
Well, as a state party too, but as a national party is what I'm referring to now.
Okay.
Okay. So we're the party of Abraham Lincoln. Abraham Lincoln freed the slaves, the single greatest move for freedom and liberty that's ever occurred in our national history.
Next to the Constitution.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yep, it is. Absolutely. Because think of the millions of people that were freed and set free by that act. So we're the party of freedom and liberty. We're the party of Teddy Roosevelt, who conserved land and improved our national park system, really, I think, created our national park system.
That's true.
More than any other president set aside land that we can go today and enjoy. We're the party of Dwight Eisenhower, who created our interstate highway system, which has served this nation amazingly, and it really improved our travel across the country. Also, Eisenhower was a president who openly portrayed his faith while in office. Something a lot of people don't know is that Dwight Eisenhower was the only president who was ever baptized a Christian while he was president. And think about that today.
Yeah.
Okay. We're also the party of Ronald Reagan, who stood for a national, strong national defense. If you remember back when he was being elected, the whole issue about Star Wars, remember, and he was, everybody was going crazy with his propos proposals to improve our national defense. Well, what he did is he was able to defeat Russia and end the Cold War without firing a shot. That is our heritage. So what are we today, Republicans? We should be people who defend and support freedom and liberty of all people, both those living and those not yet born. Okay, we should be a party of people who conserve our land, conserve our national resources, use them properly, just like Teddy Roosevelt. Okay, just like Eisenhower, we should be a party of people who build a good infrastructure to serve the citizens and a people party of people who are willing to stand up and say, our na- nation was built on a Christian faith, and those are the principles we're going to support. And just like Reagan, we should be a party of people who say, we're going to stand up for a strong national defense. On the local level, we're going to stand up for first our first responders and supporting them, providing for in the county, our sheriff's department, in the cities, our police, our fire, our emergency response teams. That's who I think a Republican should be, based upon our history and what we have been as a party. We should also be a party that supports limited, that is for limited government, because it's, in my opinion, it's the role of government to stay out of the way of people and to allow people to achieve the American dream. I look at my own life, growing up on a farm, as you said, and the world I live in today, I'd never been to Texas when I was a kid, the world I live in today, I didn't even know existed. And I feel so fortunate that I've been able to achieve what I did in this country. I wasn't slotted into having to do one thing or think roads weren't shut off to me. I was able to make my own way. And so we as Republicans need to be a party of people who support our inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and try to get people to achieve all they can achieve and achieve that American dream.
Very good. Well, I've asked you to reread the Texas State Republican platform that was adopted by GOP delegates back in June of two thousand twenty two. Are there any platform planks that you oppose? And if so, what are they? And why do you oppose them? Lauren?
Thanks for asking us to reread it. Great exercise. There are some planks that I oppose. And the reason opposed them is because, in my opinion, they take away voting authority from the people. They limit the influence of the public and the citizens on where we're going as a government. I'm going to point out two.
Okay.
Okay. I think it's plank nineteen D.
Okay.
That calls for a repeal of the Seventeenth Amendment. Now, as you know, the Seventeenth Amendment called for direct election of senators.
Yes.
And the plank calls for a repeal of that. I'm opposed to that because I want the people's vote to count to the maximum it can. Okay. I'll give you an example. Back in two thousand twelve, Ted Cruz was relatively unknown. He ran for US Senate against David Dewhurst, who was at the time, our lieutenant governor. David Dewhurst, I've never met the man. I'm sure he's a great person. I'm sure he is a strong Republican. Okay. But he was more of the Austin establishment candidate.
Yes, he was. Yes, he was. I agree.
And Ted Cruz was this fire breathing conservative who had a message. And his message was, we need to change where our government is headed. In that election, Ted Cruz took his message to the people. Okay, and the people responded. It resonated with them. And he was able to defeat David Dewhurst for the Republican nomination and go on to win the US Senate seat. In my opinion, and this is just projecting, had we, if we didn't have the Seventeenth Amendment, David Dewhurst probably would have been the one of those, would have been the person chosen to be our next senator. And the benefit we've had from Ted Cruz and his conservative philosophy that has galvanized the people around our state and around the country, we wouldn't have got to experience. So that's why I'm opposed to that plank in the platform.
Yeah. And you know, it's, this is what's good about being about conservatism, because good people can disagree and we don't froth at the mouth and and just run out of the room. So you, I think you know that I was one who, one of those who proposed this, and we disagree on this issue. You have good, a good argument for it, for removing it, and I respect that. Now, now, it did get in the platform, thankfully. But and we, like I said, and I think this is what's important about about anyone who is running for office or anyone who's taking offices is, do you have, it's not just that you have a differing position, but you have a cogent argument for your position and are willing to 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 stand up and in opposition to to something that you don't agree with. So I, even though I disagree, I appreciate that you're willing to talk about it.
Well, and I remember at the the Republican.
County convention.
County convention. Where this did come up. And I I did remember that you were in favor of it. You and there's other people that were too.
Yeah.
And and I agree with what you say, you know, we're, one of the things that we're suffering from in this nation is is overly divisiveness.
Yes.
If that's a word.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
We, because we don't get along. I mean, I could sit here and have a conversation with you, and you and I've gotten along great. We don't agree on everything.
Exactly.
My guess is, the more we explored, we'd find out we agree more than we disagree.
Without question. Well, I don't even think that we have to explore, Lauren. I know that we agree. I think maybe the five percent that we may disagree, if it's even that much, is is, I think, the exception, not the rule. So I mean, that's the.
Yeah.
That's what's important.
Yeah. And, you know, I think it was Reagan that said, the eleventh commandment is thou shall not criticize another Republican.
Yeah.
I think we've lost sight of that.
Well, and I and I think, unfortunately, I think that there's a lot of people who are calling themselves Republicans who are not behaving as Republicans. So.
Right. And that that happens, there's no doubt about it.
Yes, yeah. So you said you had two. So that was the first one.
Okay.
What's the second?
The second one is is somewhat related. And frankly, I don't know where you stand on this.
Okay.
So this, this might be your idea too. So I might be stepping on another landslide.
No, that's good.
Okay. It's plank thirty four.
Okay.
Plank thirty four calls for the, an amendment to the Texas State Constitution to create an electoral college within the state of Texas. Okay, I don't understand the reason it was included. I don't know how it would help us, because it goes on to say, if I remember it right, that 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 state electoral college, I think it would be made up of the people in various senatorial districts, that that would then elect our statewide officials. Well, does that mean I don't get to vote on governor? I don't get to vote on lieutenant governor? I don't get to vote for attorney general? I don't understand the reasoning behind it. I thought about it when I read it, and I thought, well, now what, why would this be a good idea? I can't think of it. I'd, of course, listen to anybody that can tell me why it is, but I'm opposed to it.
Yeah, I think I think the reason why is is the same reason nationally. I mean, you do vote for president, but you're actually voting for an elector, not not for the President of the United States. But if if we had a popular, if the president was elected by popular popular vote, Donald Trump never would have been elected. And I mean, there's a lot of Republicans presidents who would not have been elected because they didn't win the popular vote. But you have rural rural areas. And with the influx of of immigrants, sorry, of illegal aliens, not immigrants, it enables the rural areas not to be kind of overrun by the larger municipalities. And that's what I think is the basis of that. But I can't be sure, because I didn't write it. And I remember seeing it. I didn't object to it. So.
And I would think that what you said is very consistent with why it was drafted.
Yeah.
But the, and I thought about this, because if you remember nationally, when our constitution was was drafted, of course, you don't remember it.
Yeah, but thankfully, you are. So let, tell us a little bit about it.
But but at that time, the reason for the, one of the reasons for the electoral college was because there the rural states, states' rights is an important part of who we are as a nation.
It was.
It should be.
It should be.
The Tenth Amendment's still there.
Yes.
Okay. And so in order that the states would have a right to vote and have a right to have an impact, this electoral college system came into play, because states like where I grew up in North Dakota, okay, without an electoral college, there's no reason to vote.
Exactly.
There's no reason to vote.
Exactly.
But with an electoral college, there is. I don't see the same need for that in the state of Texas. And but I do see, I do agree with that on a national level. And I think it served us well as the the rural states is particularly, they all get two senators, so that's two electoral votes. And then how many reps beyond that? So on a national level, to me, it makes a lot more sense.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think as as time goes on, this this issue may actually have more teeth. It's kind of, you know, I think it was four or it was six years ago, I think, that I proposed ending early voting, because I felt like it was where it was where most of the election fraud was taking place. And it was heavily objected to by even inside my precinct convention. And so it did not get to the county convention even. But now that we're looking at what's happened around the United States, early voting is is clearly one of the, one of the problems with election fraud, where where it takes place. So in that, in the light of that, I think this, this, this plank may have more teeth as as time goes by. But fundamentally, with the platform, there's really no big issue that you disagree with when it comes to limited government and and.
No.
Those kinds of things.
No, in fact, when I read your question, it said, this is not an opportunity to say what's good.
Exactly.
Because there's so much good in that platform.
Exactly.
And we could be here all afternoon.
Absolutely.
Talking about the good.
Absolutely.
I'll tell you another one.
Okay.
That I would like to see worded differently. I think it's plank thirty eight.
Okay.
Which calls for the Texas Legislature to pass laws which preempt the authority of local government. And then it lists three or four things, one of which is property. Okay. The reason I think that needs to be rewritten is that there are portions of that that make sense to me. For example, I would not want the city of Dallas passing a minimum wage law. I don't think they should. That I think that's wrong. I don't think they should have the authority to do that. I don't know that they do to begin with. But if they did something like that, I would be opposed to it. So in that extent, I think it's good. But then it also mentions property. And I think one of the biggest issues we're facing here is property, high density development, et cetera. And if the authority is taken away from the cities and the counties to determine development rights within their jurisdictions, that will mean that that authority will be all cast on Austin, right, the state senate and the state House of Representatives. And so to say that that authority, we should that the state law should preempt local authority, I don't think that's that's correct. I think there's nowhere where the people have a better touch with their representatives than in local government.
Absolutely.
I know when I was mayor, if somebody disagreed with I did, they could come find me. And they would come find.
Or see you in the grocery store.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And we would have these discussions.
Sure.
Okay. No disrespect to our state senator or our state rep, but they serve such a large constituency that if I have problems with something they did, or if one hundred and seventy six thousand other people have problems with what they did, it's hard for them to talk to them, hard for me to reach out to them. Now, I may be able to, because I know them both. But for the average guy, they, it's hard to make that connection. And so when you're saying, let's take authority from the local government and preempt it with state government, I think where that's a move in the wrong direction in a lot of cases. So that's a provision I would rewrite. Now, your question.
I like that.
Your question was very broad.
Yes, it is.
It was, what provisions would you rewrite? And let me just tell you, I'm going to stop there for one reason. I've spent the last forty three years of my life writing contracts. Okay. And we argue over things like commas, and where you put the the, and things like that. And if you and I were going to go through this whole two hundred and seventy four plank platform and say, tell me everything you want to rewrite, Lauren, we'd be here a long time.
Yeah. And that's a really good point. The reason I bring this in is because of the issue of the Rhino issue, is that there are so many people who say, I'm a conservative Republican, you being among them, among as every candidate running for county commissioner, state rep, every Republican says they're conservative. So what I am trying to ferret through, you know, what is guiding you? What is your conservative values being? How are they being guided? Are they being guided by the Republican platform? Or do you say the platform has no relevance, and I'm just going to do what I want to do?
I point that one out, consistent with what you just said, to show you the kind of thing where I think that, you know what, we, something like that, we should rewrite, because I think it's too broad.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with the prince, some of the principles. But man, I do not want to separate the people from their representatives. I want to, because you know what, then they have the right to say, you know what, we're not liking what you did, and we're going to change much more easily than they do on a larger level.
Yeah.
Okay. So I use that as an example, because I think it's it gives, it's the same principle. We have to give the, give those rights and keep those rights as close to the people as we can.
Amen. Johnny?
Well, Bob, I spent some hours looking through that. You know, there's like forty nine pages of it.
Yes, there is.
Understand.
Yes.
How much there is there.
Yeah.
Do I agree with all of it? Somewhat? Do I agree with, disagree with some of it? Do I think some of it needs to be changed? Yes. Now, to get real specific, we don't have enough time, I don't think we could go through this whole thing.
Sure.
But I did point out one thing.
Good.
Where it's in there, and it says in there, it says.
And what plank is this?
Um, this is the plank.
You don't have a plank number? That's fine.
I think it was fifty four.
Okay.
Where it says power grid. This one kind of bothered me the most.
Okay.
Again, there's, there's so many, you know. It says, we urge the Texas Legislature to pass legislation to harden the Texas electric grid, increasing capacity and preparedness for all hazards. Now, the me, that shouldn't be, we shouldn't be saying, we urge. It should we be, should be doing. We should already have done this, because that led to, with my background, that led to one of the biggest catastrophic events Texas has ever seen for us statewide and for us dollar wise. Most people don't realize that it was one of the most costliest catastrophic events in in the United States. And it was pretty much centralized here just to Texas. Because it wasn't just, you know, you get a hurricane, you got coast area, you get a tornado, you have little air, you know, part of a city or it can be miles long, you know.
Right, right, right.
Cities. But this was statewide.
Yeah.
You know, and what I've read about. You know, and what I've read about it and everything and I've heard the committees on it, it could have been prevented.
So it's not that you disagree, it's that you think it needs to be stronger, the wording needs to be stronger. Okay.
I think the wording needs to be stronger.
Ultimately, what I'm trying to get at is 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 where are you going to separate from the Republican Party? And as you looked over that that platform, is there anywhere that you go, yeah, I'm 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 not gonna?
Well.
I I can't abide by that.
You know, it's it's kind of like this, Bob. You may not agree with all of it and you may not disagree with all of it. But then there's a lot of it you may agree with, but that's what we've been presented. That was what was voted on at the convention. I've been to convention twice as a delegate.
Yes.
And that's what everybody consensus was, is this is what we want. And to me, as a Republican, you should be following that. Now. The next convention, if you don't like it or you want to see it changed, that well, it'll start at the county.
There's a way to do it.
There's a way to do it. You start at the county.
Sorry, at the precinct, then the county.
You start precinct, you go to the county and then then you get it put into the state convention.
There you go.
So, uh, but to be a true Republican, I can't say I'm not going to follow it.
Very good.
Because then I I wouldn't be saying right here.
Then you wouldn't be a Republican.
I wouldn't be a Republican.
There you go.
You know.
Very good. Excellent, John Johnny. Thank you. Rich?
Well, you know, again, as a GOP precinct chair, I've always handled my my precinct conventions. You know, with my procedure to support the county and the state conventions and and always forwarded my minutes and, you know, and enlisted delegates to do that. I you know, been to state convention. I don't have any real issue with any particular planks or platforms. You know, it's funny, it always comes up with something about succeeding from the union seems like it always
Yeah.
becomes a buzz issue and.
That was that was actually the resolution that passed last in two thousand and two, I believe.
Yeah.
Two two, yeah.
And and I'm glad my parents moved me here forty seven years ago.
Yeah.
I was seventeen, so I wasn't too happy at the time.
Yeah.
But but I'm glad they did now, but I just think that would be tragic to 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 give up my American citizenship affiliation. But other than that, I'm good.
Are there any platform planks that you would like to see worded differently?
I don't really see any I'd like to see worded differently. I am glad that there is, you know, term limits, you know, mentioned because again, I am, I'm a big believer.
Yes.
In term limits for paid positions. Now, we just said I was on city council fifteen years. It's hard to be a professional, non-paid politician.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, it's just, I made all my money in Greenville working on spy planes. You know, I've made no money on development or in politics or any of that. But and it's really a problem for me to become a politician now, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
But I certainly believe that that definitely need term limits for for paid politicians.
Love it. Well, next question is, what is your philosophy about the role of county government? What county services or responsibilities are essential? And when do they cross the line to become needless and or intrusive government growth? Rich?
Well, you know, that is, that is interesting because you know, when when you're campaigning, a lot of people really don't have an idea what a county commissioner is.
I I would agree with that.
Court does, you know. And and it is important. It's a fifty million dollar budget.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's got, you know, four county commissioners, one per precinct and then the county judge that makes the county commissioners court. And they do set the budget and the tax rate. And they are the the sole authority for all contracts, you know, within the county. It has a very important roles. You know, you think about the jails, the courts, you know, to all the records. You know, our, you know, sheriff, our deputy's department, our our rule of law in the county is is run at the county level. And of course, library, which I think the world of. Again, I'm on the Rockwall County Library Advisory Board. And and you'd be shocked, there's some fourteen thousand constituents walk through that door a month. Of course, it is also important that that government does what government needs to do and no more.
Yeah.
And and to serve its constituents at a reasonable tax rate. And that, you know, you've got to keep the public safe. You've got to keep them safe. And and one of the things we're going to keep talking about is that I think the state legislature is making it very difficult for us to protect our citizens with with the level of development that's going on, you know, within the county. Because we do have to make sure that our citizens are are safe and secure and feel safe and secure. And and that's, you know, obviously the number one thing. But, you know, we want that open space feel. We have lots of roads and bridges. We have, you know, soil reservation. Lakes that we have to preserve, a lot of mowing in the right away. There's a lot of quality of life things that that are really dependent on the county to do because if Texas is not doing it and if the city is not doing it, then the county is doing it. But we want to do those intelligently. We want to do those efficiently. And and I don't, I don't foresee a big issue with our very lean county overstepping, you know, onto our our personal lives because it is very lean. And and I would certainly intend to keep it that way. And and I think, you know, having a conservative perspective. I think that that a good county should be able to run his budget with his current citizens without counting on growth. Because that's when I think you you run into trouble.
Very good. Lauren, you talked about limited government. So this this question should be right in your wheelhouse.
Man, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe my philosophy of local government is very similar to my philosophy of any government. The role should be limited. But the things the government does, it needs to do well and do with excellence. Okay? That's my philosophy of local government. Now, what does that translate to? Okay? Well, let's let's focus on the basics. Nothing's more basic than police protection, fire protection, water essentially, because you don't live without those. So when I look at our county government, I think we've got to support our sheriff's department. Sheriff runs the jail, sheriff operates throughout the county and we need to support and make sure he has the funding and the facilities necessary to catch the bad guys. Okay, do the investigative work that's necessary. Because that's our county law enforcement. Another essential service is very closely related, the district attorney's office. The sheriff catches the bad guys, the district attorney puts them away. We've got to make sure that we provide funding and facilities again to be sure that we can convict our criminals, we hire good lawyers to do it and we put them away. So again, public safety is huge. What else? Roads. Roads need are are a public function in our country. And we need to make sure that our roads are adequate to serve the population we have. It's a big issue. Since we started this campaign.
Yeah.
We started knocking on doors, my wife and I in July, hundred ten degree heat. We've been through this county. We've had thousands of interactions with people at doors, thousands of conversations. Okay? It issue number one A, one B, and one C, and they're all related. High density development, water and roads.
Yeah.
With one guy, it'll be roads first, another water first, another high density development first, but that's it. And they're all they're all related.
Yeah.
And as a county, we have two functions. We have to deal with our county roads. Okay, and we also have to deal with state highways because in Rockwall County, our main sources of transportation are state highways or federal highway.
Yes, they are.
Interstate. Okay, so we've got two completely different areas in which we have to deal with this issue. But the county roads cannot be ignored. And historically in Texas. County roads have been the job of the county commissioners. And in fact, I I hunt on some deer land down in Mills County. And the guy is the guy we lease our land from, he used to be a county commissioner when he first started there. And when we you pull into his yard, he had a road grader sitting there. Why? Because he'd go out and grade the road. Okay, that was.
Really?
That was his job.
Wow.
His job is to maintain roads in his precinct. Okay?
It's like that literally.
Yeah, and and we've got to remember that's our job as county commissioners. People want to get places. They want to get there quickly. They don't want to sit six changes of a light waiting for it to turn. It drives you crazy. Okay, so roads, that's another one of those essential public services. Another huge fundamental service of our government is in the county is subdivision regulation. Now traditionally, that hasn't been such a big deal because most of the counties or most of the subdivisions were built in cities. But there have been changes to legislation which have made landowners and developers in the unincorporated areas of the county say, we're going to go there because we can do things we can't do in a city.
Exactly.
And we've got to, as as we approve that, so subdivision regulations, we need to pay huge attention to that. Open spaces, which is an offshoot of subdivision regulation, we got to pay attention to. And then it's all the basic things in county government. You know, you need a birth certificate. You need a death certificate. You you get that the office has to run well. You got to record your deed. We got to, it's got to run well. You 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 need to get your your registration change on your car. It's got to run well. So all these basic functions, this is what county government should do and this is what we need to focus on.
Very good. Johnny, how about you?
Well, our county government exists to ensure the basic needs of our community are met. You know, infrastructure, clean water, lower taxes, safe, healthy, you know, safe schools. Our health of the county for his health needs, schools, you know, there's all kind of issues of of county government that need to be addressed. But, you know, we get back to as county commissioner, the state mandates a lot, what we can and can't do.
That's right.
You know, I have a whole list over here of all of the for is like veterans affairs, they, you know, people don't think about there is a county veterans affair. There's the county maintenance. There, these are the some of the smaller ones you don't see, like your DAs and your sheriffs. I mean, there are a couple of the biggest ones. But, you know, there's, there's a whole form there of of things, you know, county library.
Yeah.
You know, we, our library is a county library. It's not a city.
Yeah.
You know, it's just like our jail. People don't realize it's a county jail. That all of the cities here in Rockwall County take all their arrests to the county. The county is the one that pays for all that. Now, the cities, the the county does charge the cities a small fee for that prisoner. But but like most cities, they have a city jail and a county jail. So we're kind of unique here in Rockwall County, being the smallest county in Rockwall, and there's some discussion now of the size.
In Texas.
Texas, I mean.
Yes, yes.
There is some discussion that we grown grew a little bit as far as some of the lines, but but again, uh, you know, you you have the road and the bridge that that the JP's, you know, the maintenance, like I say, there's just a number of things that the county commissioner will have to do. And as long as you're looking over their budgets and you approve their budgets. I don't think we have the act anything in excess at this time.
Very good. Well, Rockwall is the second fastest growing county in Texas behind our neighbors in Kaufman, which is why growth in the county is arguably the biggest challenge commissioners will face in the coming years. What needs to happen to ensure that the county can support and sustain this growth? And what knowledge and or experience do you bring to the table that makes you uniquely suited to make that happen? Johnny, how about you?
Well, again, Bob, I I'm going to go back off of where my past with being at, you know, with a Fortune five hundred company, being business for myself.
Yeah.
You know, with being a small business owner, we're going to have to meet the needs of the county and help if we can, some of the smaller cities here like McLennan Chisholm. You know, they they're at the point now where, you know, they don't have full-time police, but the county sheriffs patrol for them.
They don't have a police department.
They don't have a police.
Correct, right.
You know, what we got to do.
They're smart.
Well, I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
It's a smart thing.
You know, um. What we have to do is we have to encourage, we have to make sure that we encourage growth, but make it smart growth, you know, you're not particularly going to stop the growth, but let's control the growth. You know, with what we're doing. So right now, we're at a point where our infrastructure, we're just about, you know, about we're, I'm not saying we can't handle more, but we're at a point where, just like coming over here, setting out a red light down here for two red lights to go through. You know, I used to go from Heath to North Rockwall in probably ten minutes. So now you're looking at a thirty minute trip. So there there, that's what we got to focus on, you know, is is our infrastructure here. What can we do better? Let's work smarter, not harder, to get this where it's easier for everyone in the county. So I don't know if I actually answered you perfectly, but what you were asking here, but I want to ensure that I can do everything I can do as county commissioner to make that possible.
What what experience? So so you talked about your 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 experience with it with a Fortune five hundred company. How does that? How do you think that helps you to navigate through all of the bureaucracy that we have here in Rockwall County? Because there's quite a bit.
Yeah, I think it's going to be with far as my experience, being a business for myself. Know what it takes to start a business, make it successful. And also for is being with the Fortune five hundred, we were in charge of of sales and forecast. We would have to look, we may look year, two years for a product. And we'd have to put that in our forecast and when it would be manufactured, when it would be sold. So but that taught me back then was you got to look ahead, you know? Like what happens to me is what I see a lot of times is everybody, sometimes cities and a lot of people, they're reactive. You know, they wait till, oh, well, we got to do something with this track traffic. I want to be more proactive. Let's look down for a year, two years. Where do we need to be in five years? Because we're still on track as far as what everybody says and and the numbers for our potential growth. So that's what we got to look at, is where we're going to be in another five. What can we do now to help that?
Very good. Thank you. Rich?
Well, Bob, you know, it was funny you mentioned that, that to me, that's that's not a an award. That's that's almost a mark to be. You know, at that level, because that just means, you know, we're one of the most developed counties that are currently being developed and we're a target to a lot of people who want to continue to overdevelop us.
Yes.
And and I think it's really important that that we put a put a halt to that. You know, that we tamp down this this, you know, overdevelopment and and prevent from getting, you know, run over with the traffic and all the concerns that that are going to come with that. You know, that's, it's it's not an easy job to do, but it's something that's got to be done and it's got to be done now. Especially with the muds, you know, the muds are are a big issue.
Yes.
Uh, and I think you have a question on that on that later.
We do. Okay, good, good. Excellent. We have something to look forward to. That's good. Lauren?
I will fight to limit high density development in our county because that's what the people want. Okay? So how do we do that? Well, first of all, we have the, under Texas law, a county has the right to approve or disapprove Platts subdividing property based upon safety, health, welfare, general morals of the of the community. Okay? And what the county has done is it's developed subdivision regulations, about a hundred and seventy five pages of them that deal with things. If you're going to subdivide property, here's what you have to comply with. And that goes from A alleyways to Y yards. Okay, and it lays out a bunch of things. We have to make do two things regarding that. First of all, we have to enforce them. Okay, one of the things that you hear a lot of times is, well, people will try to get things changed because it doesn't fit their development or doesn't work for them. Well, let's enforce the regulations we got. Okay? And then let's make sure to keep those regulations up to date and current because things change over time. And and what people are looking for changes over time. What our community can support changes over time. So let's keep those current. I'm really pleased that I've actually, even in working in my capacity as President Open Space Alliance, been able to work already with the county on handling situations related to some of these developments. I'm sure you've heard of a development that's been proposed here called River Rock Trails. Okay, well, that's a development that's been proposed, most of it in the unincorporated area of the county, some of it in the McLennan Chisholm ETJ. And what they're proposing to do is build six thousand three hundred and seven homes on approximately eighteen hundred and seventy.
Oh, I am familiar with it now. Okay, yes.
Yeah, okay. So when when I heard that was being proposed, I went to the county judge, Frank New, and I said, we are the Open Space Alliance. We're here to help you. Let us do an analysis of this proposed development in light of what our Open Space Master Plan is says. Because the Open Space Master Plan was adopted by the county in two thousand and fifteen. And the Open Space Alliance was formed to help make sure that that was implemented. Let's make sure that the developments we that are coming comply with what we want Rockwall County to be, this in this instance, in the case of open spaces. Okay? So I'm happy to be already doing that. What other special? I think part of your question is what other qualifications do I have?
Yeah, experience. Yeah.
Yeah, so I would cite that, that I'm already working on on dealing with those development issues. I've also gone to the to the commissioners court and suggested. I've also gone to the, to the commissioner's court and suggested another, other changes to the, to the, to their subdivision regulations. So this is something I'm working on right now with, without any authority really, but I'm trying, I care about our county. The second thing is when I was in Heath and he, a city is very different from a county. And the things a city can do are very different from what a county can do.
Yes.
But in Heath, we came up with our plan of what we wanted the city to look like. And it's guided us very well. I was proud of the part I've had to do with that. And I'm proud that I was part of two comprehensive plan committees where we said, this is what we want our city to look like. That have really helped guide and shape us. I was proud that when I was mayor, I dealt with issues like roads. We had one of our biggest, one of our biggest traffic jams was right in front of the school.
Amy Parks.
Amy Parks.
Yeah.
And so, uh, we built a road around the back of Amy Parks to relieve that traffic. Why do I bring up roads? Because in the county, if development's coming, we've got a plan for roads. And as you said, people care about roads. Okay? A hundred percent of the people in this county care about roads and care about traffic. And it's, they're not, they're not happy with where we're headed and we need to address those issues. And the thing is, you've got to address those issues all the time, right now. Because if you don't, it gets away from you. And then one day you wake up and you think, you look around and you think, I don't recognize this county and I don't want to live in this county and that's what I want to avoid. Finally, um, in this subdivision or development plan, the county has started, as you know, a, an initiative to be, to do, to a strategic plan to get us where we want to be. It's just in the very infancy of it right now. But that is going to be very significant to deciding where we go. Uh, I'm very fortunate. I've been asked to, uh, represent the open space subcommittee and work on that. I'm excited about it. It's a great opportunity because we're going to be looking to the year 2050 and saying, what do we want Rockwall County to be? It's going to be a great opportunity for citizen input. We learn what people want and it should guide where we go.
Thank you. Well, last March, county commissioners passed a resolution opposing municipal utility districts or MUDs, which are both special taxing districts and political subdivisions created by developers to provide infrastructure and services such as water sewer and stormwater drainage in areas where city services are not available. The resolution, which has the signed support of all city mayors in Rockwall County, highlights that these special districts have been improperly used by certain developers to avoid compliance with county and city infrastructure plans. In fact, both the cities of Rockwall and Heath will not allow MUDs due to the burden these special districts place on the city and surrounding community resources and infrastructure. So what is your position on MUDs? Well, Lauren, if I had to guess, I think I know based upon what you've already talked about, but what, where do you stand on MUDs?
I'm opposed to using MUDs in the county because they're a vehicle to increase density. Today, if you want to, let's say you owned a hundred acres of land out there, Bob, and you wanted to develop it. You could do that without a mud, but you have to use septic system. And you would, that means you gotta have one and a half acres per lot for your septic system.
That's a state statute. Yes.
And I think most people in the county would say, well, we're okay with one and a half acre lot developments. The problem is if you get the mud approved, then you can go into this huge density, like I mentioned a minute ago, 6,307 homes on 1,870 acres. Wow.
Wow.
And dump that in the middle of county and see what happens to your roads.
Yeah.
So the mud allows that increased density and that's why I'm opposed to it. The second thing, Bob, is that MUDs are formed on a basis that's inconsistent with our democratic process.
Exactly.
I mean, here's what happens. Somebody buys a thousand acres of land. Nobody lives it. It's a farm. They move a trailer on it.
Yes.
Some guy goes, lives there long enough to establish residency requirements. And then guess what? There's a vote on a municipal utility district and it's proved one to nothing.
Yes.
It's a joke.
And that's illegal. You can't do that in the state of Texas, but that's how they all get.
That's how it gets done.
That's right.
That's how it gets done. It, and it's a joke and it's, it makes a farce of our election system because I, I guess, I'm not sure. I guess the theory is the mud affects that thousand acres, but it affects the whole county. Again, let's talk about the River Rock development we mentioned a minute ago, and I hate to pick on anybody, but this is going to have such a huge impact on us. That would, if there's 6,300 homes built there and you look at the plat and there are small lots, there's no retail, there's no doctor's offices, there's no hospital, there's two elementary school sites, there's not a middle school, there's not a high school, all those things. Okay? You drop 6,300 homes there, three people a home, you're at about 20,000 people. You dock 20,000 people in the middle of the county and say, good luck. What, what happens? Every time they gotta go out and buy milk, they gotta get in their car. They gotta drive to Fate or Roy City or Rockwall or Heath or McLennan Chisholm to buy it. So the pressure it puts on the roads is incredible. Okay? So to say that this landowner can vote on it because it only affects his property is not correct. It affects our whole county and we need to have the ability as a county to look at that and approve it. Now, in the last legislative session, as again, I'm sure you know, cause you're well educated, there was a bill introduced that would have given Rockwall County alone.
Yes.
The authority to approve MUDs that were going to be placed, placed in Rockwall County. That bill was defeated. That bill would have been a game changer.
Yes, it would have.
It would have changed everything as far as development goes.
Yeah.
And because that was defeated, we, we still have this kind of wild, wild west attitude of development. As county commissioner, one of the most important things I can do is go work with our state senator, our state representative, the other members of the house and the senate and get with other counties that think similarly and try and get the right to regulate those in our, in our districts. Okay? That's, that's just huge. And that's what we gotta do because we don't have the authority to say no right now. And we gotta have that authority.
With the irony of the whole thing, the hypocrisy of these developers is they will come in and say, uh, property owner rights, land rights. If, if I'm a property owner, I should be able to do what I want in, on my own property. And what do they do? They build a development and with an HOA that they create a bunch of rules. And if, if for instance, uh, rules as little as if your bush is dead and you don't, and you don't replace it, you're going to be fined. You, there is, there is, these are, these are developments of absolute tyranny. But the developers like to talk about how they're all about property rights. That's not true.
Well, and you've hit on such a huge point, Bob. And I had a conversation with someone recently on this topic and the comment was made, property rights, just what you described.
Yeah.
People move to the county because they want to live a less regulated environment.
Exactly.
I get that.
I do too.
But look what's happening here.
Yeah.
These are not people moving to the county.
No, they're not.
These are people buying land. They don't live here. They, they don't care about shooting fireworks on the fourth of July. They're going to come in, they're going to build their development, they're going to sell every inch of land they bought and they'll get out of here and never own, never, never live in Rockwall County. So to say that they have their property rights to do what they want ignores the fact that that's really not what they're doing.
Exactly.
The guy who has property rights and wants to live unobstructed by government interference in the county is the guy who has a five acre tract of land and wants to have a couple of horses and, or goats or chickens or whatever. And I get that.
Yes.
I support.
I do too. I do too.
These, the, the, the people that are developing these huge tracts of land that cry property rights, it's not for them to live here and live the life they want. They're not moving into those developments.
No, they're not.
It's for them to come in and take advantage of it.
Amen, brother. Amen. Well, Johnny, how about you?
Well, Bob, right now as far as the, anything for is a mud, okay, in the county. And we're just going to say rural county, county. The county has very little control because it's going to have to go to the, down to Austin to get some new laws ready to where we can have more control. Now, am I against the mud? It's a double edged sword. Do we, does some areas maybe need the growth? Need the area there? I don't disagree, but again, the muds are, is part of our problem. The muds, if they're going to have to be held more accountable, they're going to have to be, okay, we've got a two lane road out here. We're going to increase the traffic three times, four times. They need to be able to, we need to be able to step up and say, hey, you're going to have to improve this road, you know, and that's where I get back to infrastructure, you know? Again, they can put them in and, and once they get approved from the state, then it's a state that the county basically hands are more or less tied. Now, I know the new county judge is looking to, looking to some of these forests to try to go some legal routes with them. But again, as far as county commissioner, until we get some new laws passed, we are still working with our hands tied.
All right. Now, Rich, you've already hinted where you stand on muds. So tell us a little bit more and why.
Well, you know, and, and that's a good point. And, and one part of also your last question is, you know, the texascounties.com lists Rockwall is the 11th most dense populated in, in 2020, Kaufman the 13th.
Okay.
So we think we are, yeah, we think we're a so low density, but we're already not.
Wow.
And, and we're, and that's not a good direction.
No, no.
To be headed.
No.
And what these muds do, they just allow developers to, you know, create another infrastructure to put in thousands of tract homes versus have, you know, onsite sewer with a one and a half acre density, which I think is perfect.
I love it.
In my opinion, it's perfect. Now, when we talk about property rights and you, you cannot, you know, tell people they have to have, you know, cows or they have to have farms, you know, sure, you can't do that. But, but I think a one and a half acre density is a reasonable compromise versus thousands of, of tract homes. Because it does, it, it, it really affects all of the surrounding, even in the cities. You know, when we have to build more roads and we have to have more sheriffs and deputies and schools, think about the schools alone. And you know what? Everybody pays those taxes. It's a, it's just not fair to have some people do a mass development, take the money, run and, and leave the rest of us with, with the burden of that, that erodes our quality of life, our traffic. You see people all over like Rockwallian, you know, all this traffic's horrible. Well, you know, guess what?
Get ready.
Well, something's got to change. You know, you gotta change something for something to change. You can't keep doing what you're doing and, and have it happen. And, you know, precinct three is the least developed, obviously, you know, of the county.
Right.
Uh, and, and it's ripe, you know, for development. So we do, we, we have to protect it. We have to protect it very vigorously. You know, obviously if, you know, we're, we're such a growing county, it, it would appear to me that the developers think we are, uh, you know, the county that rolls when it comes to development. And until we make a strong signal that that's no longer the case, you know, they're going to keep coming.
Yeah.
You know, cause like they keep saying, if you, you know, negotiate for, you know, hostages, that gets you more hostages.
Exactly.
So if you negotiate with, with, with big developers and their representatives, you get more big developers and representatives. And we really need to make a clear stance. And I do think it's going to require a consortium of counties, in my opinion, that have the same perspective to try to counteract the lobbyist movement in Austin and try to get some leverage to meet the leverage to affect some change.
You know, I'm glad you talked about schools because I, I think what's important here is to recognize that, you know, we just had a school bond, a massive school bond. And those who were on the committee, serving on the committee, several of them came here on this show. They were explaining all of the things that they were doing. But one thing that was glaring, a glaring omission and, and they had acknowledged is there was, they, they were not planning for MUDs because you can't plan for MUDs. There, there, there's nothing holding them back. And so when we think about the schools that are going to have to be built to accommodate these, these municipal utility districts. And, uh, that is a, that's a massive addition to the, the school bond budget, uh, future school bonds, I should say, because we haven't planned for them yet.
I agree. And then I was really hoping that Colony Ridge would really get some traction with our legislatures that would highlight you just how badly they're overstepping, you know, individual property owner, property rights of developers and affecting several surrounding counties. Cause the same thing, yeah, the schools that, you know, I mean, you can get mad at the school district, but they're a victim just like the rest of us. They're not in control of this.
Right.
And once they're here, they have to be educated.
Right.
And they have to have facilities.
Yep.
And, and I know you have another further question about that, but where these schools go, that's got to be considered in our traffic planning too. Because, you know, even downtown Heath, you know, around school times, that's, that's a major thing is where the schools go. And, and so the school board, you're right, they're, they're just a tail trying to keep up with the dog and, and keep all the bows rolling and make sure we have good quality education.
Yeah, absolutely. Excellent. Excellent. All right. Well, let's talk about something that few voters are even aware of, but has been the driving force behind growth throughout the county, which is the Rockwall County Road Consortium. What do you see as the road consortium's purpose, especially as it relates to county growth? In other words, is the consortium's job to drive development in the county by locating new streets and roads that promote their vision for where they believe future growth in the county should occur? Or should their focus instead be on areas of the county where growth is naturally occurring? And what changes, if any, would you like to see made to the consortium? Rick, Rich, Tom, let's try that again. Rich?
And that is an interesting question. And that, that's another, uh, the consortium, I've been attending their meetings for years too.
Yeah.
Cause it is fascinating. It's very important in Heath.
Yes.
You know, and think about that with, excuse me, with 740 expanding, that's when Heath's expanded greatly is when 740, you know, happened. I think the consortium's job right now, unfortunately, is, is to try to catch up to the massive growth that's happened in the past.
Yeah.
It's a catch up thing. Um, later it would be great to have some future planning, but you know, we have a ways to go just to, to catch up with the development that's happened so far. Between them and the RISD, which we mentioned, both the consortium and the RISD are, are victims of the overdevelopment. They're just trying to recoup. I think that the bonds could be more transparent. Uh, it's a very interesting environment. You know, they have a, a list of projects and cost of those projects, and then they do a bond. But, but, uh, those of us who know, know in reality, we have no control over what Tech Dot does, where, when, or why. But those bonds allow us to entice Tech Dot to come our way because we can fund, you know, the, the starting projects and get the projects ready to go and, and guide it in our direction. And, and we pay a consultant who, who knows Tech Dot, uh, knows their players and their schedules. I mean, you can imagine, you know, dealing with any, you know, multi-billion dollar government organization is, is going to be very convoluted.
Yes.
You know, and changing and, and difficult. But this consultant seems to know these folks well. He seems to have a good thumb on the data and the direction where things are going and, and helping sway projects our way. Uh, it's not the perfect environment, uh, but it's, we have no control over it. And, and I think we've benefited, I know we benefited greatly from it because in fact, uh, boy, I hate to think where we would be if we did not have that consortium.
Yeah.
But I do think maybe we could be more transparent with folks as to what, what the purpose that it is, that bond money and that, that you just have to have faith. It's very difficult, uh, under this circumstance to, to, to budget and task and track funding when you just truly don't know what direction it's going. It's a fascinating package. Those, those meetings are a lot of fun to go to see where those products are and you see bunches of, bunches of zeros, bunches of zeros. But, but at least it's a path forward. And then, and once we can get there, I think we should try to direct the traffic. Again, which reason I mentioned the schools and the school board, where the school's going to go, you know? And, and I think the, uh, the county project 2050, I was going to call it Dana Macklick is, is.
Yes. Yes. And, and it's not done. So if you get on the, on the commissioner's court, you'll, you'll be part of, of putting, finalizing that.
I will, and I've already volunteered to participate in it anyway. Yeah. Yeah. I jumped on that. That's a great opportunity.
Yeah.
You know, because where the schools are going to go is where the roads need to go, where the traffic is going to go. So it's very important for us all to get together, the cities, all the entities to say, hey, where are we going? So they can communicate. Unfortunately, like you're saying with the school and the consortium, everybody's just trying to be reactionary to, to whatever occurs. Maybe we can, we can get some concise, more relevant data to start guiding where we're going in the future. So I think Dana's going to do a great job with that. And I just make a pitch, I, I, I'm excited to join this county commissioner's court. You know, I've known all those folks well, Frank.
Yeah.
You know, came from the council.
Yes.
You know, and Dana and John Stacy, I've known forever through GOP.
Yes.
You know, I mean.
Yeah. Dana, John, and Frank, it's three of the best things that's ever happened to the commissioner's court.
That's true to my opinion and I, uh, campaigned for, for all of them.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, and I know all the candidates for one as well. So, so it's not like there's any, you know, any, uh, concerns for me in that.
Yeah.
And, and I, I, again, I like to adamantly say that, that you talked about, you know, with the mud. If I run the court, there'd be one less blank on that, on those signatures. I would be there.
Love that. Thank you very much. Lauren, what about you?
I think generally the consortium's done a real good job. When, when the consortium was first started, I actually was the Heath representative for a year or two on it before I was mayor. What would we do di, what should we do differently? First, transparency and communication. Your, your very question started out with, this is something most people don't know anything about.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, what does that tell you? That tells you we're not communicating well to the public. Because if most people don't know what the consortium does, it's not getting that message out. Why is it important to communicate? Because it drives what's going to happen in our county regarding roads. So let's. So let's communicate to the people. Let's get their input on roads that are coming, things that are planned. What do they want? Where do they see the crisis points? Second thing I would say to focus on is do what you say you're gonna do. I just wanna make sure that we do what we say we're gonna do on these projects. Because if I'm gonna go sell this in the city of Heath, I wanna make sure this gets done. There were two projects in Heath. One was widening 740, um, south of the south portion that goes past the high school.
Yeah.
The other was widening and expanding 549, okay? The FM 740 improvements got done. And you can't imagine what that would be like if we still had just a two lane road there. It'd be a disaster.
It would be a disaster.
It would be a disaster. Okay? The second thing, uh, the 549 project has not been done yet, okay? And in fact, just, I think it was last month that Judge New said, let's bring 549 widening because we still got money from sitting from 2008 there and that bond issue that hasn't been used. How can we have credibility with the voters if we don't do what we say we're gonna do? Let me give you an example of what I did in Heath. When I became mayor, we had our our, uh, infrastructure needed a lot of work. One of the items, remember I talked about widening FM 740? Well, that goes down south to the intersection with 550 and 549. And then it goes west to intersect with 1140 there and goes right by Amy Park School. One of the projects on that that I made sure we put was to build a road around Amy Park School because it was a nightmare, a two lane road, people in and out of school, trying to drop their kids off, pick their kids up, people just going places and getting stuck in traffic. It was a disaster. So I got with the school board and I said, we've got money to fix, uh, to to do something to improve this. The school board split the cost of a study with us. They paid for half and we did to look at what was the best thing to design to fix the traffic congestion at Amy Parks.
Hmm.
Okay? We came up, the best way to do it was to build a road off 740 behind the first water tower and then back up. So we've built a street back there. And it, what it allowed people to do is a southern access point and a western access point, as well as a northern and an eastern access point, and built flow of traffic around Amy Parks. That's what I mean by you develop your projects. And the first thing I wanted to do, the first project we completed was Amy Parks because I knew people wanted to see it. We told them we'd do it and it made a big difference on their lives. That's what the road consortium needs to do. I'm not saying they're doing a bad job, trust me. I think they're doing a really good job. But when you say you're gonna do something, you need to do it.
Very good. Johnny?
Well, I think the consortium is a very good, uh, group. And reason being, it lets all the cities come together to express what they're seeing in their cities and as far as roads and state roads. Now, I know the state roads come, come, or state come in and give updates and things and what they have proposed. Uh, as far as it developing, being used to develop areas, I can't see it doing that. But I do see it as a plus at this time that it, with the growth that we're experiencing, that they, at least some of the city leaders of the other, of all the cities, have a place that they can come and say, hey, this is what I'm saying. What can we do? Is there anything can we do? Or, you know, or can we propose, you know, something? Or, well, when this like 205 here, you know, was proposed and being widened, you know, it would let McClintock Chisholm come in and say, well, okay, then what is this gonna do for us? You know, it gives them a voice is what I guess I'm trying to say here.
Very good. Well, what is your vision for Rockwall County? And include what changes, services, programs you will be advocating for if elected? And if your precinct has needs that are different from other parts of Rockwall County? And and share what you intend to tend to do as commissioner to help meet those needs. Johnny, how about you?
Well, well, I'm gonna get back to this is, I'm not a career politician. I'm a sixth generation Rockwall County resident. I spent most of my life here serving the community, as you know. My dad was former commissioner. Again, there's nothing more that I could do that I think did serve as commissioner that would that would benefit the county. And I come up with that answer, part of the Rockwall County Historical Foundation. And we had a lecture series that we do every second Friday of the month. And we had all, we had 150 years that we could of the county judges. And bringing all of them up, you know, and they were there, we, we had some, oh, I don't know, 20 years ago, you know? And every one of them, at the end, you know, they got to tell why and how and what was, what something was unique. But every one of them says it was the most pleasurable thing they could have done as far as Rockwall County. Now, getting back to it, uh, as far as what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna run, I'm a conservative Republican. I'll always put the Rockwall County constituents first. I will fight for our accessibility, for our clean water, our, our, uh, infrastructure, to get it up to where we need to be, for calculated growth, uh, funding our resources of our law officers, men and women, uh, you know? And I say that because as the county grows now and the way that everything has changed as far as the cities bringing in ETJs where they can't as much without being voted on, the county is gonna, where we're gonna see a lot of growth. And we may, and we need to strengthen, make sure we have that here, you know? I'm gonna use an example, you know, of, it's real basic. You know, we were smaller, you know, you, you go to the store, you buy a basket of apples. More than likely, there's not a bad one in it. You go buy a bushel basket. The more apples you get, the more potential there's gonna be some bad ones. And we need to make sure that them bad ones know, if they come to Rockwall County, that they're gonna be dealt with, far as the sheriff. Because you can't stop it, but you can deter it, you know? And I, and I've even had some of the JPs and the judges state that they'll, somebody will come over here from Dallas and they'll say, well, in Dallas, they don't charge us like that or give us that much time. You know what their answer is? This is not Dallas. And we're not Dallas, we're Rockwall County. And we gotta make sure that we keep that, you know? So I'm I'm real strong on law enforcement, okay? Uh, to keep that. And I'm gonna do what I said I'm gonna do. I'm gonna not make you a promise I can't deliver.
Yeah, very good. Rich?
Well, you know, for me, if that's good news, my my vision is, uh, minimal change in look and feel.
You're my kind of candidate.
You know, I mean, that's really what we should strive for.
Absolutely.
You know, uh, so that we can, we can maintain our open country feel and support sustainable development. I mean, I'm not anti-development.
Right, no, exactly.
I'm not. Uh, but we have to be fair to the citizens, the pioneers who moved here and stayed here and their farms, you know? The Rockwall heritage is, is not muds. It's it's not tract homes, it's not apartments, you know? It's it's farms and ranches and and open land, you know? And and I have fought, you know, very hard in Heath, you know, to keep that.
Yes, you have.
Keep that going.
Yes, you have.
Uh, and so I think in precinct three, it is unique that it is the the least developed. It's the the last stand, essentially. It's the last stand. And we've got to, we've got to work together, uh, to to keep it with with that open country and safe feel without without having development overrun us and and make us the place we moved from to get here.
Yeah. You know, there, there was always the argument that those who 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 like the tract homes, who like this, these massive developments, they always would characterize people like you and me as saying, you know, when you, uh, we're kind of, we move here and then we wanna create a drawbridge so no one comes over. And that's just, uh, absolutely not true for any of us. Uh, we believe in controlled growth and and to live by the standards that we have established like Heath. A great, great example is the city of Heath, what you guys have done, so.
Yeah, my point of view is if if you wanna live in McKinney or if you wanna live in Plano, then move there.
Yeah.
Move there now.
You bet.
You're you're automatically got what you want.
Yep.
And we don't have to ruin what we've got, you know, to to make it like what already exists in surrounding communities.
Yeah, exactly. That's very good. Thank you. Lauren?
When I think of my vision for Rockwall County, I think why I moved here. We moved here in 1986. We had three little kids, had our fourth later. And, uh, we wanted to raise them in a open environment, a place where they could feel like they were in a small town. So you talk about what's my vision for Rockwall County? I think back to this area where, uh, we moved to where we, it was a small town feel. Still got a lot of that, okay? But it's a small town feel and people respect each other. And we have a little bit of elbow room, open spaces in, as it's defined, is really three things. It's it's hike and bike trails, it's parks and open areas where we can congregate. And it's protecting our our watersheds and our floodplains and things like that where we can have open areas. We could need to do all that. That is my vision for what I want Rockwall County to be. I want it to be a place where everybody takes pride in it. You know, one of the taglines I've had in this campaign is remember why you live here.
Wow, I like that.
And I I tell people, you moved here for a reason. Let's try and preserve those reasons. Because everybody did, people moved here for a reason.
Excellent. Thank you, Lauren. Well, now is your opportunity to, uh, tell Rockwall County voters why you are the best person to be their county commissioner for precinct three. With that, Lauren, take it away.
Thanks, Bob. I am asking each of you to vote for me, for to be the county commissioner for precinct three. That's what I, that's why I'm here, that's why I've been campaigning. When I ask you to do that, I'm asking you to place trust in me. And that's a huge responsibility put on my shoulders. So I have to ask myself, what am I gonna do? And what promise do I have to the voters of precinct three? And it's real simple. Here's my pledge to you. When I'm elected to be your county commissioner, when matters come before the commissioners' court, I will evaluate those matters and I will vote on them based upon two questions. The first is, is this good for Rockwall County? And the second is, what do the people want? You know, I've been campaigning and knocking on doors since July, six months. I've knocked on thousands of doors. I've probably had over a thousand conversations with people. And on the issue that's most pertinent to what we're facing today, the development issue, I get asked one question over and over. Why was this approved? Why did they do this? That tells me that people don't feel they have a voice in government, and that's wrong. People are entitled to have a voice in government. I will listen to you. Just because you don't agree with me doesn't mean I won't listen to you. And if you're right and I'm wrong, I will change my mind because I wanna do what's right for the people of Rockwall County. So, again, when I'm your county commissioner, I will evaluate and vote based on two questions. One, is it good for Rockwall County? Two, what do the people want? That's my pledge to you. I'm asking each and every one of you to vote for me on March 5th, or if you vote early, starting on, uh, February 20th, to give me your vote. I know it would be a great honor and it's a great burden and responsibility on me to do the right thing after I'm elected. I will do that. Thanks so much. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. My mobile number is 214-288-2854. Thanks for listening and God bless you. And God bless Rockwall County.
Johnny Myers, take it away.
Well, Bob, again, I know I'm going over this several times, but, uh, that just comes back to, this is what I believe. Uh, I'm not a career politician, don't claim to be. I'm claiming to be a businessman that's gonna bring a business approach to Rockwall County. Uh, again, sixth generation Rockwall County. I've spent most of my life here, I've spent all of my life here, but serving in some form of community involvement. I am involved right now, uh, I'm president-elect with Rockwall County Historical Foundation. I'm second vice president of the Rockwall Lions Club. And I am on the CAC, uh, I am what they call an blue tie ambassador with the CAC, Children's Advocacy Center. Um, as far as that goes, I am Christian, believe in the Lord Jesus Christ. I will always put, again, God, family and country first in that order. I think if we do that, then the whole place that we live here, the whole United States could be a better place. With that being said, I'm a conservative Republican, will always, again, put you, the constituents, first. My office door will always be open. I will listen to what you have to say. I'm not gonna tell you what you wanna hear. I'm gonna tell you what I can and I can't do. And again, I'm Johnny Myers, I'm asking for your vote. Uh, I do have a website, Johnny Myers, www.johnnymyers.com. Uh, please go on there and, uh, it has all of my platform, everything there that you might want to look at. And again, there's a phone number. My phone is always on. You can give me a call, send me a text, whatever you wish to do.
Rich?
Well, thank you, Bob. Yeah, I I truly believe that this is the time and place for me to run for this position. Uh, I've done the work, uh, I've done the work in Heath, I've done the work in the county. Uh, I have fought over development, I've created comprehensive plans, ordinances. I have the voting record to enforce those plans and ordinances because that's important. Having them is one thing, but if you're gonna give deviations later, then then you're not gonna be helping the problem. Uh, I've lived here, like, say, for 28 years, raised kids here. I I'm not going anywhere. I know the county perspective, I know the players. I've worked with them in many organizations as I've worked here. I am not a developer, never been a developer, don't represent developers, you know? I I had a great career, 38 career in Greenville, uh, working on spy planes. Uh, I've managed programs, uh, that were equivalent to the $50 million county budget. So so that level of responsibility is not a shock for me. Uh, I've managed the, uh, procurements there, you know? That facility spends an average of $35 million a month in material. That's their material spend. And and I've done that. Uh, I actually ran their MRO, their maintenance, repair and operations. I did all the contracts for the construction, renovation, ramp paving, roads, electrical, power grids, uh, all those things that that I've done. I did some contracts for them, managed the suppliers. And and to further complicate this, explain it, I did this on property owned by the city of Greenville, often with money from the Department of Defense. So I don't think any contractual obligation we have in the county is gonna be a really big challenge for me. Uh, again, I've I've made a good living, uh, I'm not in this for the income. Um, I I think it's, um, concerning when when, if you have people who are candidates who who have not fought, uh, for low density, uh, even even with their own city, that that you think they're gonna go to the, uh, the county and unincorporated areas and and protect that. I I just think that's just a little bit questionable, you know? I I have fought hard for our parks, um, I, which, you know, again, I've I've fought against some of our candidates to get park land. So it's just interesting to me that, um, when it comes down to development, that, um, if you're in the development industry, if you're representing developers,